Good morning and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting in the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Barbara Johnson, Minneapolis City Council President. I'm joined by Councilmember John Quincy this morning. Before we start our meeting, we have the opportunity at times to recognize significant events in our community, significant people. And today, we're going to start with an employee who has a remarkable record in the city of Minneapolis. So Bertha, why don't you come on up? And Lori? Have we got it? Okay. All right. Bertha's our longest-serving employee. So I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Quincy, Chair of the Ways and Means Committee.
Thank you so much, Madam President. On behalf of the Ways and Means Committee and the whole City Council, this is an exciting time as we recognize somebody who's been with our staff for 54 years. And she's about to retire. She's thinking about it anyway.[106.72][106.72](Laughter) Right? Right? She's going to, she says. Great. It's an opportunity for us to recognize her. And before I read the resolution, I thought I'd invite Lori Johnson, her immediate supervisor, if she'd like to make some comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Quincy. We're thrilled to be here to honor—Bertha will have 55 years on the record by the time she runs out all of her vacation and everything else in a phenomenal career here. It's something we're celebrating. Bertha had a very big celebration for her 50th year, so she said we could keep this low-key. But you know what? 55 years does serve something more than a low-key send-off. So we are very excited to have you going off to enjoy life outside of City Hall, and we wish we could hear all the stories from your years past and all of the different things you did. I've heard tidbits about working on Saturdays was a required part of your schedule and doing things by hand and your transition to computerized, electronic. Bertha has so much knowledge in her head, and we are going to miss you immensely. And thank you for all of your wonderful years of service. It will be hard to beat 55 years.
That's right.[208.12][208.12](Laughter) And speaking of the working class, Mr. Ruff, if you could join us and read the resolution, and we'll give an opportunity for one more round of applause from Bertha. So, "The City of Minneapolis: A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council Honoring Bertha Gabrisch for Her Service to the City of Minneapolis. Whereas Bertha Gabrisch began working for the City of Minneapolis on January 2, 1963[231.73][231.73](at"—yeah, everybody giggles.[233.93][233.93](Laughter) —at the Minneapolis Public Library and is now the longest-tenured employee. And whereas Bertha was promoted to the Police Department where she filled two different positions, one in property, in which she typed evidence property information on small index cards and then spent the remainder of the day filing the cards, and another Police Department position in which she was required to work on Saturdays for arraignment court, providing the police officers and attorneys with files of information on court cases. In 1976, Bertha transferred to the Payroll Department as a clerk and leaves the department in 2017 as a supervisor. Bertha has been an integral part of the modernization of the payroll department from the tedious entry of paper timesheets to a complex electronic payroll system. Bertha, in her quiet manner, made a big imprint during her 54 years and nine months working for the city. And whereas after 54 years and nine months of service, Bertha is retiring to enjoy life outside City Hall. Her dedication to the city of Minneapolis and the vast knowledge she has gained and shared over her tenure are immense. Bertha will be greatly missed by her colleagues at the city of Minneapolis. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Minneapolis. City Council thanks Bertha for 54 years of service to the city and wishes her well in
The next resolution is a resolution declaring September 22 as World Car-Free Day in the city of Minneapolis. So I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Kevin Reich, who's the Chair of the Transportation Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Barb. Good morning.
Good morning.
Let's balance it out.[397.31][397.31](Laughter) So as—boy, it just went from one side to the other.[403.53][403.53](Laughter)
Kevin, good morning.
Wow, some physical comedy this early in the morning.[408.81][408.81](Laughter) Well, I'm Councilmember Kevin Reich, and as indicated, I chair Transportation Public Works Committee, but I also serve on Move Minneapolis, which is the organization that thinks about how we get to places through and throughout the city. And of course, in the middle of that is a challenge, and it's a challenge that the federal government actually underwrites us to try to solve, which is congestion and its relationship to pollution. So it's movement, it's economic development, it's how we live, but it's also the environment and the relationship between the two. And that's pretty much the day-to-day work. Lots of different strategies, lots of different ways to get the word out and get people and companies thinking about that. Today, having a day where we contemplate and maybe think about our lifestyles and what it would be like without a car. Now, of course, cars are a big part of our city and our region, and even new technology that's contemplated, revolutionary technology supposedly, still is a car, car-free or driverless cars. And so it's a part of what we have, but what would it be like to not have one? And as policymakers, when that question can't be answered in the positive, it's not possible for a particular individual. Why is that? Why did the system not provide an option to not have one? And as policymakers, that can guide our work very directly. And so this day, we work on that. I'll read the resolution, and then we'll have some words from the people that actually make it happen. So, this is a resolution of the mayor and the city council declaring September 22 a World Car-Free Day in the city of Minneapolis. Whereas the world has been celebrating World Car-Free Day since 2000 as a means to the education and promotion of alternative forms of transportation, and whereas clean air is a universal necessity and every effort should be made to improve and preserve air quality, whereas downtown Minneapolis TMO, known as Move Minneapolis, has been and will continue to be instrumental in reducing CO2 in our atmosphere by promoting sustainable transportation alternatives, and whereas bike sharing and bike commuting have contributed to reducing the number of drive-alone trips in Minneapolis, and whereas carpooling, car sharing, bike sharing, bike commuting, and public transit have contributed to reducing the number of drive-alone trips in the city of Minneapolis and are instrumental in reducing traffic congestion and the number of vehicles on our roadways, and consequently, the cost of maintenance and repair of those roadways. And whereas reducing carbon emissions and traffic in the city of Minneapolis for one day per one year offers health benefits to all and will demonstrate global solidarity. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Minneapolis, on behalf of the people of Minneapolis, hereby declare the date September 22 henceforth as World Car-Free Day in the city of Minneapolis. Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much. Oh, sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Reich, and Chair Johnson, and council members for having us here and for supporting Move Minneapolis for two decades at this point. We work with a market of 160,000 downtown employees. Of that 160,000 employees, 60% drive alone to downtown every day, in and out every day. They need to park, they need to find places to put their private vehicles. We think there's a better way, and the better way is using transit, biking, walking, carpooling, telework, car sharing, anything but driving alone. So I'm here with my colleagues today, and we commit to you that over the next year, we are going to find ways to get people out of their cars to create more vibrancy, more affordability, and a much greener environment for the city of Minneapolis. And we thank you for this. This is fantastic.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? All right. Thank you all very much for joining us this morning.
Thank you.
I'm going to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting in the Minneapolis City Council. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami is absent.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
We have a quorum present. Councilmember Worsami is ill. Next item on the agenda, we have adoption of the agenda, and we have a motion before us by Councilmember Quincy to add under the Order of Resolutions a resolution honoring the Minneapolis Pipe Fitters for the Heats-On Program. Is there a motion to add that to the agenda?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Then a motion to adopt the agenda as amended is in order.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the acceptance of the regular meeting of August 31, 2017, and the adjourned session held September 12, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the acceptance of the regular meeting of August 31, 2017, and the adjourned session held September 12, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have referral of petitions, communications, and reports of the city officers to proper committees and departments.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. The reports of the standing committees are next, and the first is Committee of the Whole. That committee is chaired by the Council Vice President, Elizabeth Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair, but there are two items on our agenda for today. The first is reaffirmation of our support for the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals as well as opposition to the RACE bill reforming American Immigration for Strong Employment, which is a proposal to reduce legal immigration by a significant percent. And then the second item is approved authorization for a local amicus brief in Masterpiece Cake Shop versus Colorado Civil Rights Commission. I'd like to move both items, and then if I could speak briefly.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Committee of the Whole report. Anyone else have any discussion on either of those items? Seeing none, Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you. I just wanted to take this moment to recognize and thank the people who have come here with red signs saying resist attacks on immigrants, sanctuary now.[866.31][866.31](Applause)
Okay.
They've presented a platform of their recommendations to the city council of policy ideas. Some of these things the city is doing today, some of these things that we need to communicate better with the community about, and some of these are brand-new ideas that we need to consider. So I just—I wanted to acknowledge and thank people who have taken their time to come here to advocate to the city council on these very critical issues where we are trying to find our way together as local government right now. So thank you for being here, and I look forward to continuing our conversation and our policy work together.
Without respect, these are not ideas. These are actions. Not opposed to having a board in here, without respect.
Ma'am, 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 ma'am.
No, no, no. That cannot be said. You can't be forced anymore, without respect.
As a general advisory—I will announce that the rules of the city council do not allow for public comments at the full council. Members of the public have the opportunity to comment on city business at the committee level. The purpose of the council meeting is to conduct business of the city. Consistent with our rules, those who disturb these proceedings and interfere with the ability of the city council to conduct the city's business will be asked to leave. Those who refuse to follow these instructions will be removed from the chamber.[965.31][965.31](Crowd chanting) Sir, sir, as a general advisory, I will announce that the rules of the city council do not allow public comments at the full meeting of the full council. Members of the public have the opportunity to comment—I wish—I would—I would wish that you would give me the opportunity. The purpose of the council meeting is to conduct business of the city. Consistent of our rules, those who disturb these proceedings and interfere with the ability of the city council to conduct the city's business will be asked to leave. Those who refuse to follow those instructions will be removed from the chamber.
Madam Chair, I move to suspend the rules of the Minneapolis City Council to allow five minutes of testimony for—
Second.
—people who are facing deportation of their families.
Councilmembers.[1038.15][1038.15](Crowd chanting) There's a motion in front of us to allow you to speak.
There is a motion.[1046.15][1046.15](Crowd chanting)
There is a motion in front of us to allow you to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
I recognize Councilmember Bender. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval—the motion is to allow five minutes for speech before the city council meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. You may speak for five minutes.
Good morning. My name is Adriana Cerrillo, and I'm a member of Minnesota Immigrant Rights Action Committee, and we are working since 2006 to stop the deportations of undocumented immigrants. And the only thing that we want to say, since we are only allowed five minutes, you know, this is not democracy in action, you know, when you are blocking the people that actually took the time out of their work to be present, because you're paid employees of the people. You are supposed to be representing and hearing the concerns. So I mean, we don't have time to waste. We met Councilmember Glidden on Monday, and MIRAC has built a strong alliance with Asamblea de Derechos Civiles, Assembly of Civil Rights, because we are understanding what is going on. Your action at the city council level to truly protect our communities is just taking me on belief. And as I respect all of you, and I love this city, I want the city of Minneapolis to be an example for the entire nation, to truly bring forward local ordinances to protect our community. You received an email with the 13 points. We are giving you not these ideas, we're giving you demands, and we're coming back to stop what is going on in here, to rein on your parade, because this city belongs to the people. It belongs to us. And I'm not going to say I'm an immigrant, because my ancestors were planted in here before the Europeans arrived to conquer, to kill, to enslave our people. So we are home, but we need this action on your part, okay? So I'm not going to go point by point on all the platforms, points that we have in here. You are going to take the time, and we're going to come back and have a conversation in the meantime as well. You have our contact information, because you received an email. So I will respect from true leaders that are before me to take action and do something, because all these good intentions but empty talk is not good enough. One of the points is the UV is a certification. When people are in deportation proceedings, we need a city ordinance that demands the NPD to turn around in a seven-day period to do that certification for people that are in deportation proceedings, that's one of them. Municipal ID, that's something else that is going to be introduced today, but that did not come from politicians. That came from our community. And one of my sisters, a great role model that I love, Maria Cisneros—Maria Cisneros, please, take a stand. She worked organizing women around this issue back in qué año, Maria? Come here. 2007, but it was introduced in 2009. And this woman also as well organized around the issue for the driver's license for undocumented immigrants in the state of Minnesota. So I just want to make sure that it's clear and understood that we live in a nation where the power belongs to the people, not to the politicians, and we are in here being respectful but demanding that our community is truly respected as well. Whether people are documented or not, we are human beings, because at the end of the day, there's no human being that is illegal. So Maria Cisneros, a great leader, a great role model in our community, a great person that all of you should be learning from, and that this city does not take the credit to say that they advocate and do work at the state Capitol for the driver's license. It came from her leadership and the women that she helped to organize. Are we going to engage in a conversation? I guess we're not, but at the end of the day, like I said, we're coming back, and these are not ideas. These are demands. We are done. We are done to be the political football of politicians, because we have had enough. You know why? Because our families are being torn apart, because on daily basis, we get phone calls from people that are detained by the police department that is not collaborating with ICE, because we know what happens. Once they are turned over to the Hennepin County, they are immediately given to immigration, immediately. And here, we also have Ariel Lopez. Ariel is a young man that was harassed by the Metro Transit cop at the light rail, and he is a living testimony. He was placed in the Hennepin County jail and immediately turned over to ICE. He was denied an interpreter, and he was denied to see a judge, and they made him self-deport. Thank goodness that MIRAC members and community members got together to get him out. So this is what is going on. We need you to act today. Not think about it anymore. Not think about it, because I don't know how you can go to sleep and say that you're passing resolutions and not acting anything at all. It doesn't take a process anymore, Ms. Glidden. We had this conversation, you said it takes time. It's a process. We don't have time to wait anymore. We need sanctuary for real now, and we're demanding it with all the respect now. So what do we want?
Sanctuary.
I don't think I hear you. What do we want?
Sanctuary.
What do we want?
Sanctuary.
When do we want it?
Now.
When do we want it?
Now.
When do we want it?
Now.
Exactly. Hear to the voices of the people. We're coming back, engaging in conversations, but demanding, please, take action today, because this is election year as well, okay? We're going to take that opportunity to engage with every person that is running for office and also for you that are not, to put responsibility on you, because shame on you all when people are being deported on daily basis. Shame on every single one of you. I don't know how you can sleep, and I don't know how the city attorney that is present in here as well—
Ma'am.
—your job is to protect—
Ma'am.
—the city from being sued, okay?
Ma'am.
You know what? The status quo is over. The city has to take leadership.
Ma'am.
Okay? And if we're going to be sued, make sure that we are being sued for the right thing.
Ma'am.
Stand up for justice. Stand up for justice, and do what is right.
Your—
If we know what is wrong—
Ma'am.
—inside of the offices, okay?
Ma'am.
Not anymore. You have the power.
Your time is through. Thank you. Thank you.
We're going to march.[1502.33][1502.33](Applause)
All right, let's move on. Thank you. All right. On the Committee of the Whole report, Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.[1514.01][1514.01](Mumbling)
Let's continue with the roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, we should, but— Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami is absent. Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Community Development Regulatory Services report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I actually have a priority motion on the agenda—
I'm sorry, did I miss it?
So I would prefer first to be called upon on that.
Okay. I lost my screen.
I've already asked for a priority motion.
Okay, Councilmember Goodman on the priority motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Due to the presentation that we just had, I had a little bit of confusion. I understand Councilmember Andrew Johnson and Frye have a resolution they'd like added to the agenda. Mr. Carl has advised me that we need to amend the agenda in order to add that. I did feel they could amend the actual item, but since I'm being told we need to amend the agenda, I'm asking if we could amend the agenda. So I would move to amend the agenda to include the resolution as—in front of you, being brought forward by Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Frye.
Councilmember Goodman has moved—do we need to reconsider first, Mr. Carl, or—
Madam President, a motion to reconsider the prior motion would require a simple majority, which would be acceptable. If you're amending the motion after the agenda's been adopted, it requires a two-thirds vote.
Okay, so a motion to reconsider would be the—
Because once an agenda's been set, it requires two-thirds.
Okay, a motion to reconsider, then, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that carries. Councilmember Goodman, then.
Thank you, Madam President. Then I'd like to add to the agenda as the last item under Resolutions, a resolution prohibiting a nondisparagement clause for public employees is introduced and in front of you by Councilmembers Frye and Johnson.
Okay. Councilmember Goodman, is there a second on the resolution? Adding the resolution? Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
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 Pollist? That carries. With that, we have amended the agenda to include under Resolutions the resolution that is in front of you prohibiting nondisparagement clauses for public employees. That will be at the end of the agenda. So then, on the Community Development Regulatory Services report, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development Regulatory Services Committee is bringing 15 items forward for approval this morning. Items 1, 2, 3, and 4 are land sales. Items 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 are new businesses opening, various liquor licenses. Item 10 is a change in our conditions for lawful gambling licensure ordinance. Item 11, I'm going to move to postpone one cycle, not one minute more than one cycle. This has to do with the order to raise and remove a building that has been fire damaged on Lyndale Avenue. Item 12 are the liquor business and gambling license. Item 13 is a contract with MCTC. Item 14 is a Great Streets Gap financing loan to help with the rehabilitation of the Franklin Theater. And item 15 is denying the request of Orchid Massage and Spa for a stay of enforcement and a revocation of their license. With that, I will move— With that, I will move all items, one through 15, again noting item 11, the motion is to postpone.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report with item 11 being postponed one cycle. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward three items for consideration. The first is authorizing an amendment to an existing contract with Riverview Window, Inc., increasing that by $150,000 for lead remediation services for eligible homes. Second item is response to a report that we got regarding our Neighborhood Revitalization Program Policy Board and our Neighborhood and Community Engagement Commission. We asked the commission and staff to consider merging the two. We came back accepting their recommendation not to do a full merger, but we passed two staff directions. The first is directing our staff in the department to make some changes to streamline the administrative operations so that they could work better together and save on staff resources. And the second is directing the department to research and develop options for structural changes to the Neighborhood and Community Engagement Commission and to come back to the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee, assuming it still has that name, in 2018 with a report for possible options to be considered, but also to come with a process for community engagement about those options. And the final item is a resolution establishing a Northern Metals Consent Decree Advisory Committee. And this would serve to advise the city council and provide recommendations for the use of the settlement funds from that consent decree that requires them to go to asthma and lead reduction work. And I'll move all three items for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Anyone have any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have six items for approval. The first item is an agreement and amendment with the Regents of the University of California Research Analysis for Police Data and Policy. Second item, second, third, and fourth item are grants. The fifth item is Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education Training Reimbursement Redistribution. And the sixth item is a 2017 Construction Workforce Goals, I guess, approval of policy. And with that, I will move all items. And if I may pull item three just for some changes.
Okay. Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Do you want to move those changes right now before we take the roll call?
I can do that, certainly. Yes. You know, with item number three, basically, the change is just adding an extra year and also just doubling the amount that's there. And that was basically an error on the part of the folks that were doing this, which is the police department. But, you know, the amount that is changed is changed to $141,800. And the term is for another extra year. And I will move that for approval.
Councilmember Yang has moved an amendment to Public Safety, item number three. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And then he has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Any discussions? Councilmember Gordon.
I just wanted to comment on item six.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
I just wanted to highlight that this is a pretty big step that we're taking in terms of our workforce goals. I know that this came up a little bit at Committee of the Whole. It's in response to some research that was done by the State Department of Human Rights that looked at workforce and workforce projections for the future. And we are increasing our female workforce goals to 20%. And that's a significant jump up from the 6%. I think there's an understanding that this will be a reach goal, much as our 32% for minority. But we've seen, as long as we've had that reach goal, we've seen a steady progression getting closer and closer to 32. And so we were kind of challenged by the state. And this is what, it's a countywide goal that they're looking at. It's higher for Minneapolis and the metropolitan area than outstate for a lot of reasons. Makes sense. But I just think it's a big step we're taking, and I think we should take it with the intention of trying to reach that goal and focusing on it.
Any further discussion on the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward three items for consideration. The first is authorizing an amendment to an existing contract with Riverview Window, Inc., increasing that by $150,000 for lead remediation services for eligible homes. Second item is response to a report that we got regarding our Neighborhood Revitalization Program Policy Board and our Neighborhood and Community Engagement Commission. We asked the commission and staff to consider merging the two. We came back accepting their recommendation not to do a full merger, but we passed two staff directions. The first is directing our staff in the department to make some changes to streamline the administrative operations so that they could work better together and save on staff resources. And the second is directing the department to research and develop options for structural changes to the Neighborhood and Community Engagement Commission and to come back to the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee, assuming it still has that name, in 2018 with a report for possible options to be considered, but also to come with a process for community engagement about those options. And the final item is a resolution establishing a Northern Metals Consent Decree Advisory Committee. And this would serve to advise the city council and provide recommendations for the use of the settlement funds from that consent decree that requires them to go to asthma and lead reduction work. And I'll move all three items for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Anyone have any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Committee Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means brings forward 14 items for consideration this morning. First three are legal settlements. And the next three are related to the convention center. We're accepting two low bids for projects as well as a contract amendment for the parking ramp. Item number seven is a contract with Gartner for research and advisory services. Eight is a contract amendment with HLP for chameleon pet licensing applications software. Item number nine is a contract amendment with Perkins &amp; Will for pre-design program development services for the downtown office building project. And 10 is the bond issuance for Park Board Disease Tree Program. Also have a contract amendment with Driver's Alert for administering the Driver's Alert program. Item number 12 is a contract with Questions and Solutions Engineering for commissioning services for the consolidated office building project. Item 13 is a grant application with two Metropolitan Council Environmental Services for municipal infiltration inflow reduction. And the final item is the, item 14 is the Employment Settlement Agreement related to Janey Harto. I'd like to move all 14 items for approval.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to actually comment on the resolution that has since been added to the agenda.
Okay, that's farther down the agenda.
Okay, so we can, yeah, I can comment on that afterwards then.
Okay. All right. Any further questions or comments on the Ways and Means Report? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the reports of the special committees. And the first committee, or the committee to report is the Audit Committee. And that committee is chaired by Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam President. I have one report to put before you today. It's the Body Camera Recording Audit from our Internal Audit Department. The first part of this motion is to refer the results of this report to Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee for review and further staff direction. And the second part of this is to affirm the Audit Committee's intent to file this report on the legislative side with the state of Minnesota. I'd like to put that motion forward.
Okay, Councilmember Palmasano has moved to two items, referring the audit report on body cameras to the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee, and then also directing the city clerk to file the report as required by state law with the state of Minnesota. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have notice of ordinance introductions. The first is an ordinance by, excuse me, a motion by Councilmember Frye to introduce at the next meeting of the city council, the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to administration revising provisions to reflect the responsibilities of the Director of Public Works and the City Engineer. So are these notices, Mr. Carl?
Madam President, the sub-items one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10 all relate to amending the charter and code. To clarify, the Director of Public Works is not necessarily nor required to be the City Engineer. So this is separating out the function of City Engineer as a function within the Public Works Department and clarifying that the Director of Public Works has responsibility and oversight in all of the various chapters and titles within the code. And so it's really more of a clarification of the titles that had been previously in and making the correction that the Director of Public Works is in charge.
Thank you. My question is, is this a notice and not an introduction?
It's all a notice.
All notices. Okay, all right. So if people don't object, as long as these are all related, I would say that notice has been given on the Public Works Director positions and the City Engineer clarifications, and we'll have the introductions at the next council meeting. So that, those notices have been given. And that is all the way through item two then. Councilmember Kano gives notice to introduce at the next meeting of the city council, the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code, adding a new chapter 42 entitled Municipal Identification Program. That notice is given. And then I'm moving, actually giving notice to introduce at the next meeting of the city council, the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to housing, adding provisions for a fee during pending adverse licensing action. That notice is given. Then we have the introduction and referral calendar. The first is a pet boarding ordinance. Council Frye is moving to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code for first reading and referral to zoning and planning, amending regulations related to pet boarding and animal shelters. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. On item two, Councilmember Kano moves to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to liquor and beer for first reading and referral to Community Development Regulatory Services, amending provisions relating to consumption and display permits in bottle clubs and brewer taprooms. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Frye to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to administration personnel for first reading and referral to Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management, repealing Article 10 entitled City Employee Residency. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Quincy to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to CenterPoint Energy Gas Franchise Fee for first reading and referral to the Ways and Means Committee, increasing the percentage rate of the franchise fees for gas 1/2% across all classes of customers. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. rate of the franchise fees for gas 1/2% across all classes of customers. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Frye to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the Food Code, Mobile Food Vehicle Vendors for first reading and referral to the Community Development Committee, amending the restriction on hours of operation within a special late-night mobile food vendor zone. And that will require unanimous consent. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Unanimous consent is given. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Frye to amend the introduction dated June 16, 2017, to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to business and license regulations, adding a new chapter 351 entitled Short-Term Rental Hosting Platforms. Any discussion on that amendment? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. And next, we have the World Car Free Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? World Car Free Day, September 22, the City of Minneapolis. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the Finland 100 Month, but I bet that's 100 years. Am I incorrect, Councilmember?
Yes.
100 years?
It's the 100-year anniversary. They celebrate it all month.
Right, all month, okay, I get you, okay. All right, any discussion on the Finland Resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the HEATS ON Program Honorary Resolution, passage of a resolution honoring Minneapolis Union Pipe Fitters for the HEATS ON Program. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the Resolution Prohibiting Non-Disparagement Clauses for Public Employees. And I've lost my screen, Councilmember Frye. I think you probably want to speak on that.
I do.
Try and get it back here. Why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to notify you that there has been a slight amendment which should have been passed out by my staff, and that amendment pertains to the final paragraph. The final paragraph was deleted, and in its place, there is a, there was a comma that was added to the second-to-last paragraph and then stating, "Except as otherwise required by law, including but not limited to the Minnesota Data Practices Request." This was some, this came from some input from our city attorney, and I thank our city attorney for her assistance. So the reason that I'm bringing this forward is this whole concept of a non-disparagement clause or a gag order has been thrust upon the public in the last several months in the form of the severance agreement between the City of Minneapolis and former Chief Harto. And I feel strongly that transparency is essential in this contract, and it's essential in all areas of city governance. And quite frankly, if we're placing a gag order on the chief to prevent her from saying anything bad about the mayor or the city, none of us should be okay with that. This is a matter of both public trust and improvement upon our city business. You know, if, if there are areas in which our city, or the police department, or the mayor, or our council members have fallen short, we should know about it, and we should not be creating an opaque black box around City Hall that prevents this information going out. It is clear that the mayor requested the gag order being placed on the chief and has since stated that it is okay that it is taken out, but it should have never been there in the first place. While gag orders are routinely used in private contracts, those contracts are, by definition, private. Public contracts are entirely different, and everyone from the EEOC to OSHA has said that gag orders should not be placed in public contracts and should have never been placed in the contract to begin with. And so, I'll just read a brief part, certain parts of the resolution that I do want to highlight. It's, "Whereas contracts and policies prohibiting or limiting workers from speaking about their employment have drawn greater scrutiny from the National Labor Relations Board in recent years, and whereas in early 2013, an administrative law judge found the non-disparagement provisions incorporated in employment agreements violated Section 8A1 of the NLRA by restricting employees' rights under Section 7, whereas Section 8A1 restricts employers from interfering with employees attempting to exercise their Section 7 rights. And under Section 17, employees have the right to choose to engage in concerted activities for the purposes of collecting bargaining or other mutual aid or protection, such as discussing wages, benefits, and other terms and conditions of work with other employees. And whereas the EEOC announced in its 2013-2016 Strategic Enforcement Plan that it would target policies and practices that discourage or prohibit individuals from exercising their rights under employment discrimination statutes, or that impede the EEOC's investigative or enforcement efforts, including provisions that prohibit charges with the EEOC. Whereas," I'm skipping a paragraph, "in 2016, OSHA enacted a new policy to not approve a gag provision that provides, restricts, or otherwise discourages employees from participating in protected activity, whether in confidentiality or in non-disparagement clauses or otherwise. And whereas the use of non-disparagement clauses in the departure of a high-ranking public official are an unacceptable affront to freedom of information and open government principles. And whereas in the public sector, non-disparagement clauses do not reflect public sector transparency or the spirit of open government. Now, therefore, the City Council of Minneapolis, for purposes of this resolution, public employee means any person engaged in service to a public employer in a business of such public employer, and public employer means the City of Minneapolis, the mayor, city council, including without limitation any board, department, commission, institution, or agency of such entities. Be it further resolved that the city shall not seek termination, suspension, or separation agreements that contain any provisions prohibiting or restricting public employees from disclosing or discussing any aspect of such public employee's employment, termination, suspension, or separation, or any policies, actions, or programs of such public employer, except as otherwise required by law, including but not limited to the Minnesota Data Practices Request." I'm happy to stand for any questions. I think that this is essential for transparency going forward. For the record, non-disparagement clauses have not traditionally been part of our separation and severance agreements and have only been the case in this instance, asked for by the mayor to the chief.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I, on the executive committee, certainly supported taking that clause out of this one particular agreement and did so. My only concern is that this is the first time we've seen this resolution, that I have. I think it's the first time the city attorney saw it, was moments ago, and helped, I think, through email, make some improvements. And I'm just curious, why can't we just vet this through our regular committee process? This seems to be, has some substance, and might be more appropriate doing it as committee work, and maybe we could refer it back to a committee so that we could fine-tune it. And this would also give the chance for the public to have it published on the website, and it could be out there for some time before we take the vote on it. I don't know that I'll move to refer it to committee, but it totally makes sense with me, and I'm not sure if other council members think that might be a good idea if we just tabled it one cycle.
Councilmember Gordon, I'm happy to delay it one cycle, to have it go through an additional committee. The reason that this resolution came forward today is it's a part of the chief's agreement. And it was only recently clear that we were not going to be discussing the actual contract since it was unilaterally changed. You know, originally, the contract came forward with a non-disparagement clause included, and I thought that the process would be fully vetted, and we would have full public transparency. But since that's not the case, I thought that it was essential to be honest.
Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank Councilmember Frye for his leadership on this and to just speak briefly on it. I know a lot of colleagues know that I'm interested in issues of government transparency, and I think this is a strong move in that regard. You know, these non-disparagement clauses are actually really problematic even in the private sector. Where you're seeing a lot of use of them too is in Silicon Valley and IT, and they're being used to silence women who face sexual harassment in the workplace and then come to a settlement arrangement with their employers that then put in these non-disparagement clauses to keep them silent so they can't share what's going on within the culture of these IT companies and startups. And it's become very problematic, and I think it's important that we take a stand against these clauses, especially in the public realm where transparency is of utmost importance, and it is incredibly important for us to reflect on where we could do things better in terms of our police leadership and even our own leadership on issues of policing.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, I want to thank Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Frye for bringing this forward. You know, in executive committee, I voted to keep the non-disparagement clause in there, and I did it.